...meeting and approve the agenda. So we'll call it an order and we'll call it the present accounting for. The next item will be to approve this agenda. So if you look, there's two items under new business to discuss the July 9 regular meeting. And this is strictly discussion. Number two will be enter into executive session to discuss the personnel matter and there will be action in order to go into executive session. So that's why we're doing the agenda this way tonight.
But there will be no action.
There will be no action after. That's just to go into executive session.
Even though there will be good.
But there will be, yeah. So with that being said, someone offer a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Watson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner. A little info of the discussion on the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries down. Alright, so we will get into our agenda for tomorrow. There will be two sets of minutes to approve. There's a June 10 work session and a June 11 regular meeting. You should have those printed minutes in your books. You can take some time to go over those minutes and be prepared to take action on those tomorrow. There are no visitor presentations, there are no bug hearings, and there are no old visits. So what we do is we'll move into new business. And rather than reading all these rezones tonight, I heard the managers say earlier that the first three and the second three go together.
That's right.
So you just want to move into discussing these rezones?
Yes, sir. On the first three, this is the family out in Florida that wants to rezone their land from three different tracks, from AF, Agriculture Forestry, to R2, single-family residential. Their plan is to sell it in smaller lots and they have to require to have five acres for each home, so they want to sell it in smaller than five acre lots. So that's what, that's what R2 would do. R2 would like to allow a stick-built house, a motorhome, or a modular unit. Now, in order to do that, they would have to go back in front of the zoning board to get the subdivision approved before they can subdivide that. These three rezones have gone through all the legal procedures and it has been approved and answered by the zoning board, but there's no opposition in the first three of those rezones.
Okay.
On the second one, this is a little bit of the five acre tracks in Crescent Farms. Currently, they're zoned AF, Agriculture Forestry, and they want to be zoned AR, Agriculture Residential. The reason they want these to be rezoned is right now those lots aren't wide enough to hold a house. Their circumference is 300 feet to the proper line of construction. Those lots aren't big enough, so our board at AR would allow that, and AR will have three per home on that. So that's what they're doing. It's gone through all the legal procedures, no opposition, and then pass them down to the board of zoning board.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on any of those rezones?
On these rezones, are vehicles sales individual or will a company come in and do a subdivision and sell?
Do they? All the ones on the list?
The only thing that we knew, the people never, the family that was interested in the zoning change, never showed up at the last meeting in the June meeting. That's why it was tabled until the July meeting. And they hired a surveyor to come in to represent them. So he did, it was kind of scan on information that he understands completely the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, to ensure that, we talked about that extensively, but we had no idea what their ultimate plans are.
But if they decide to do that, then there will be some additional requirements.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, sir. I have to follow our subdivision regulations.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions on those rezones? Okay, we will consider all six of them addressed tonight and we'll move to number seven, consider scheduling a budget retreat. Is there some dates? Did you have any?
I'm still in the early stages of budgets. I would ask for a meeting to know earlier than the last week of July and maybe first week of August, somewhere in that area. But no, I prefer to know earlier than the last week of July and then get everything wrapped up.
Just know and look at y'all's calendars and mention and come up with some dates. When you say the last week, you talking about like the 22nd through the 26th or that three day, 29th through 31st?
Three day. 29th through 31st.
How long do you want?
The budget retreat, it's usually last.
If we start the day, we usually does about two or three.
That's most of the day.
When do schools start back?
I go back the 23rd.
23rd. Anybody want to throw a date out?
We have to record the 29th, so I would, I say record it, it's period of course, I would be able to, if you needed me, the 29th.
I can't remember. I think I looked at my other calendar. I'm forgetting.
And it can be later in August if y'all like it. We don't have, we just have to approve before October 1st, so we can approve it at our August meeting or our September meeting.
So we could move to August 20th, because the next week's the meeting. We'd have to almost move to the 12th through the 16th if we moved into August.
Right, RB would be on the 12th or 13th.
Is it easier for you to get away before the students come back?
I'm thinking the 31st. I like, I like to know them before. Um.
Do y'all want to tentatively plan for the 31st and see how that checks out for the next couple of weeks?
The 31st of July.
Of July for a budget retreat?
The only time I know I can't do it is the 5th through the 9th. I cannot do it that week at all.
Okay.
Well, let's, yeah, let's shoot the 31st.
So we will settle and plan, we'll take action on that tomorrow. Anything else on budget retreat? We'll move into number eight, we consider resolution 2019-5, approving the TSCS government agreement with authorizing the chairman to execute agreement on behalf of the county with the city in the area. This is an action item. Is, and I don't know if the manager wants to go first or if you want me to go first?
I'll kind of speak on the resolution itself and then we'll go into detail. Resolution 2019-5, approving the government agreement with the city and the county and district. TSCS funds over five years for the county receiving 80% of those funds and the city receiving 20% of those funds. The project list for both the city and the county is behind the IGA unless it is listed as a today. Those projects that we've talked about and I've got the city's projects, this one is in there.
Could you look into the one who asked me?
It's in year four.
I can ask it.
I know since this is our last planning retreat, I think that you asked about Parnell is in year four. Commissioner Watson asked about Pine Harbor is in year five, and Commissioner Karwaki asked about the lose reach office of the state representative taking it out, because there's portions of it that's paid and portions of dirt, and those that was added into year one.
Is the, I know that I have talked with Commissioner Karwaki about a phone call that I received about Stillwater Road, I'm sure you've heard of it. Is there, is it, I'm sure this is laid out with priority to what it needs and?
Right now Stillwater is listed in year two, isn't it?
But I mean, everything in year one is much more detrimental than year two, three, and three, is it like that or is it money based or?
It's pretty close to being important of the last commission. This list was made off, based off their recommendations and then we added into the ones that y'all are placing in addition.
So is that, is that all you have?
For that, for that one. The next one calls for the recommendation.
So I know Commissioner Karwaki was in on the meeting, but we had a TSCS committee meeting, Commissioner Karwaki, myself, the manager and the attorney, Mr. Popcom is out, and we met with the city and we met with Councilman Loxel, Councilman Skee, and Mr. Sweetsie and Mr. Vaughn, and we went back into that meeting and threw a bunch of stuff around. And kind of our position as we left that meeting was the county, we would do like we do on SLOSS, it's an 80/20 split. I know Commissioner McClellan and I had this conversation yesterday, sometime recently. But the city has not completely bought into that unless it's changed at this time. And just where I was coming from as a committee member representing the county, as, and the numbers have changed a little bit since we met. When we met with the city, we were talking that the city had 80% of the roads and we had the other 92%. 11% of the population, we had the other 89%. So we felt like the 80/20 was very generous. We weren't really getting anywhere with that. So in that meeting, we also discussed reducing the tipping fee for city track, not the trash, the yard waste that they pick up, from $5 to $2. We also recommended that we would assist on Market Street, grainy and hauling. And then we also.
The Ashantilly.
The Ashantilly ditch. There's a big portion of the Ashantilly ditch when the city incorporated that subdivision that Tony Martin was building. They inherited a big section of that ditch. So we threw in those three concessions and we've been back in two and I don't know that we've made any headway, you know? So that's the county's position, that's where we are. Now, and recently, we've gotten an assessment back from the city and their roads have gone from 22 miles to 32 miles, which obviously brings them up to 9.6% of the roads and the population being right at 14%. So I don't know if any of the commissioners have any feelings on that, but that was how we presented at the committee meeting. Manager Sweetsie, city manager Sweetsie, asked us to send him something writing. I know the county manager sent it, I thought he copied each of us on that.
Tell me the changes again. Percentage went to 9.6 and the population was, percentage of roads was 9.6.
Yeah, 9.6 of the population is 14%.
And what were the, just, I'm sorry, and I know that Patrick's done it, but again, it was Ashantilly, what were the two, lowering it from $5 to $2?
That was the tipping fee in Atlanta.
Right, and then Ashantilly?
Ashantilly ditch, we were saying.
Right, which is the one down there with Mrs. Vaughn's house.
The one that goes under 99 by the red shed, by Marvin's Garden.
Oh, okay. And then what was the other?
It's the Market Street.
Oh, okay.
There's a proposed development coming into Market Street, which is dirt, and they asked that we assist in some of the encines, if we could do some encines, some grading and hauling. And that's, that's what we proposed, that's what the manager sent to the city manager in writing, and that's what we will be taking action on tomorrow, which will bring us in to the next item. Where are the my agendas?
So where do we get this, this proposed city?
From the county.
Okay. And would the 20% cover this in a phased?
Yes.
Like completely?
Essentially, what would happen is, is hopefully the city would agree to join on with these terms, with these concessions. But in the event we cannot come to some sort of agreement, the city's been at 70/30, there's been some talk of coming to 75/25, but in the event we do not come to an agreement, the county would then go this along if this were voted for, and we would be able to collect .75 cent on the dollar. And that would just be a county's TSCS. It would not, it would not involve the city.
Would the city do their own? I mean, is that, they can, okay. And then I wanted to ask one more question about the financing, just because I've seen a few things that we've looked at that we've projected costs, but then it's considerably more than what we thought, like with the fire department building. Is, did we account for?
See, these are numbers that engineers prepared for us last summer, and we told them that some of these projects would be five years out and try to, try to create inflation in those numbers a little bit.
So is there any questions?
Did we get a response back from the city when you sent that proposal?
Right now, in discussions between the two managers, he's not sure how his board's going. He thinks he's at a tutu split right now and doesn't know which way to go.
Do we need to act on this before they say yea, nay?
We've got, we've got to vote unless we're going to come back and have a call meeting.
We have to have this to the board of elections by the end of the month to be on whatever route.
When will we decide?
There's three city, attorney and two city councilors sitting here. Richie, what y'all thinking last week?
Uh, Tuesday.
Tuesday. My question, as well as concern, is what happens if we said no 80/20, which essentially says, what does that say as far as road money for, for that portion of the county?
What does it say for?
Because I heard, what I understood is if, if we went with 80/20 and they don't agree, the rules say we're going to get 75. And if we get 75, does that district still get some of that 75?
Commissioner Karwaki, how do most of the roads that would come out of that 75, yes, they're being over from?
But it might not mirror the list that they gave.
It won't mirror the city's list. The items that are on, the items that are on this don't mirror the items that are on this. So this is your county list, this is your city list.
Well, we haven't known that the 75% would do what's on the first list.
You'll be less 5%.
We'd be able to do every one of our roads, our miscellaneous projects, which is going to account for 25% of the SLOSS, that number would go down about 375,000.
And how much does it go down to this?
No, it's not set up in districts, not for the county. The county would receive, the county currently receives 80% of SLOSS projections. The county, if they do it solely, would only receive 75%. But it's not broken down into equal shares amongst the four districts within the county.
What's the management of the 25%? Or 5%?
So essentially.
Or really 25%?
If we have the 75%, we have to go that route, then it's just.
My question is.
I mean, the city does their thing and we do our thing.
Well, I've been, I've been from day one and I've asked the city council, I've asked the county staff, I've asked Commissioner McClellan and Karwaki. Can you change my mind? When there's 11% of the roads and you're entitled to 25% of the tax or 30% of the tax?
Your logic is sound. I do understand your logic. My concern is, is that if we go down this road and the county and the city stays where they are and we lose, we, the whole county, lose 25%. That's not the biggest concern I have. The other concern I have is, do they, I don't know if they can, but I'll put it this way, do they have some means of retaliating? You denied me or you cut me out or some of my roads couldn't pay?
I wouldn't look at it as we haven't been cutting them out, I would look at it as them cutting themselves out.
And then to me, my question is not so much how we will see it, how they will see it, and will they be a way for them, that we end up in a, what's that, in a rivalry where we're not? I understand that right now we have a good cordial relationship.
I would hate to see it get put in that position, but when I, when we met with the city and I said if these, if these roles were reversed, if we were the city and you were the county and you were offering me 20% of a tax, that I had 11% of the roads, I'd come down there and kiss you on the lips. You're offering me double what my roads are, it's a transportation supply. And that's why I'm saying, change my mind, let's keep it in round numbers, let's just say it raises a million. We know that today's economy and how it's going today, it will raise over a million. But if it raised a million dollars a year, that's $800,000 for the county, that's $200,000 for the city. We haven't spent $800,000 on roads in six, seven years. The city hasn't spent $200,000 on roads on that longer and longer, not city funds, not county funds. Now, if you were putting the old maybe the state funds, we all have spent that kind of money. But when you start talking about that and if we, if we reduce it to 75 and went it along and it passed, there's a chance it wouldn't pass. You know, now we're talking about 750 for us and nothing for the city. So if, when you're sitting, when we're sitting here offering those three concessions, $2 tipping fee, Market Street, and assuming responsibility for all of Ashantilly ditch and 20% of that tax, that's a pretty big concession on the county's part.
Here you are, man. What was their response to, hey guys, here they got 10% of the roads, why do you need 25% of the money?
If we want to open this up into a two-way fight or fuss because the meeting ended well, but it didn't start well, we'll open the floor up and ask them, they're here. I'm fine with that.
I want to ask one more question just for clarification because, I mean, I know in other things that I deal with, there's a state standard. So, you know, there's a state average or whatever. Is there a state mandated amount? No, you can give whatever, get adjusted, okay. I didn't know if there was a percentage that.
Right now, on one of our concessions, the cost I was going to claim that ditch for the city's portion, and I said this number to the manager last week, I think was 182,500.
That's just for one add-on project? What, did you have any time to look at what the project is, like with the $5?
I didn't have, I didn't have the engineering plans for Market Street, so I couldn't calculate those numbers.
No, I just took the rest.
Tim was wanting to do that and Tim was also going to get me the number for the tipping fees, but I didn't.
This is kind of why I don't.
Yes, sir.
I know no one knows the answer to this question, but I'll pose it to make a point as well as to ask the question. Is there a serious risk that we all burn? Nobody gets anything?
Absolutely.
And I don't know whether the city will do anything like that where, okay, citizens are there, we're not getting anything from this, why should you don't vote? I know we're going to do that, but that concept might be out there and you at the end of the day, we lose everything over five, over issue of 5%. That is a serious concern. I mean, there's a lot of roads in this county that needs to be addressed and I don't want, I'll just cut off my nose to find out.
So the threat of it not passing or somebody being unhappy with us versus the concessions we've made, and again, 20% of the tax and 11% of the roads.
Seeing as you offer, I would like to find out from them, what is the response?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are you all prepared to answer that question? What is the, what was the response to the issue of, hey, you only have 10% of the roads roughly and only about 15% of the population? Why do you feel it's fair that you get 25% of the resources?
I will, I will say one comment and all that, and Rick, please.
That's it, come on. You can do the third one, please.
My question to each one of y'all, and this is, I've been listening, you know, I was waiting for my county commissioner to speak, but in every single road in the county, every single road is in the county. Every city road is in the county.
Then you want us to get 100%?
Listen, listen, but I'm, I'm listening to you and I see the response of, you know, these add-ons, kind of like, I spoke with Kate, these add-ons are like going to a card dealer. And then when you get, when you already set along a price, then you go into an office and they start adding these things on. Well, the roads and the ditches are the most important thing, that's what I think.
And Councilman, those add-ons were presented, we had a committee meeting to try to hash this out, and it wasn't, it wasn't à la carte. All those were offered at the meeting prior to this meeting, prior to the phone calls and the other meetings that have been had. All those were offered that day at the meeting.
You, you know, you said a while ago, you said that you have spoken to the council. Since that meeting, me and you have not spoken on this issue.
Absolutely not.
But I have spoken to Kate and I told her, I said, Kate, and in, in the meeting, when we were all in the meeting, this is what I said. I told her and I told y'all, I will respect what her, the city manager, and our city attorney come up with. She is my count, she is my commissioner, and she was going to get back with me after this meeting and let me know how y'all want, how y'all are going to vote, or her consensus. So, yes, I asked one simple question. All the roads, they're, we're part of this county. We are part of this county. These roads are just as important to our constituents as they are yours. You're our, you're our leader. And yet, you said the right thing, when me and you started that meeting, we didn't come off on the right foot, but at the end, what I said was, we will take, what Kate, our attorney and our city manager, they're going to meet. Kate would like to have seen the road assessment. I said I will get you that road assessment as soon as I get it. So as far as, I'm one council member and what I said was, I would like to fight for our citizen and get every single penny I can, because let's face it, our roads and our ditches need fixed.
Absolutely. So my question is, Commissioner Watson asked you guys a question, and would someone venture or step in to answer it?
Is it an answer to my question?
Oh, yeah. I'd rather ask. Was the city attorney wanted to say something, so.
Attorney.
Attorney, to the city attorney. I apologize.
I'm a question, because I always like people to answer the question that I ask.
Dr. Parker Watson, we presented primarily free county appointments to the R2000 commission. The first one was, for whatever reason, the legislature wrote it that way. I don't know why, but they did. If the city does not participate, county pays .75%, which is like a default 75%. I don't know why they wrote it that way, but they did. The second is goes to the quantification issue in that it's, it's easy to say, well, we've got this number of miles and you got this number of miles, but that's ignoring the density aspect of it. For instance, there are roads in the county that we're calculating their mileage, but we're not thinking about the fact one car might drive over every 30 minutes or every hour. The city streets are far more heavily used than some of the county roads. And there is no question, there are county roads that are used just as heavily as the city streets, but that was the other issue that we raised. The third one is something that's hard to quantify, but nonetheless, it's there. Dairy is the face of Mattox County. It is. Most people's first experience with Mattox County is they enter the city of dairy. So we believe it's good for the county and the city for the city streets to look good and for our drainage to work properly. And I know that everybody on this board disagrees. I, I know the chairman loves the city of dairy, there's not a doubt about that. Everybody has been negotiating this. We were just at an impasse on, on those final numbers and those are the points we presented. And I know there are counterpoints to those, there are counterarguments as well, but that is how we felt about that day in the meeting.
Thank you.
And I'll get back, and like I said, we don't, I don't want this to turn into a debate. I feel like it is a very good deal for both the city and the county, but when we say they're more, they're more used or more traveled and density, does it cost more to fix them? We've all got road issues, we've all got ditch issues. Having a mile, resurfacing a mile, digging a ditch, it's going to cost us the same money. I mean asphalt, concrete, backhoes, dump trucks, it's going to cost us the same money. And if you and I go back to the percentages, when we, when we talk about percentage of roads, percentage of the population, and it's 20%, I mean, if we were to try to do this like the SLOSS calls for, the referendum based on population, the city would take a bigger hit. I still feel like that the 20, 80, 20 with the other concessions is huge. It's a good deal for everybody and the 80/20 covers all of our needs that we've presented, all of our needs.
And my understanding of the law is if this passes in whatever format that we have rated, that percentage must be spent on the city. A minimum, that amount must be spent on the city.
And?
Once, when we got the, when we got the deposit from the Department of Revenue, since we, at the Intergovernment Agreement, caused for us to issue 20% of that deposit to the city.
Right into the city.
calls for us to issue twenty percent of that deposit to the city, it goes...
That's how SLOSS ones work as well.
That's right, yes, sir.
The SLOSS is in effect now.
Mr. Chairman, I think you hit this, but the list that the city has provided us is covered under the eighty, twenty split. I mean, they haven't sent us anything else in the county they wanted anymore.
And even with the eighty, twenty split, they still have three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars miscellaneous.
And I'll go back to something that Councilman Skeen just touched on. If this T-SLOSS pass, and I hope it will, I think it will, with our road list, the city's road list, I hope the city's on board. I hope they get the twenty, we get the eighty. Our road issues will pay. What do we put in the general fund here for the transfer road department, one point two, one point five?
With the L-DIG, it's one point, one point three.
And I mean, this lightens a lot on our general fund. Tremendous. It would lighten a lot on their general fund.
Everything on the list will get done when eighty, twenty split?
Yes, sir. And they'll have three hundred thousand dollars left over.
Other than the principal, what is the issue?
It's a good thing. If we can walk out of here happy, and they can walk out of their meeting happy, we all win.
Is it beyond the principle that I'm feeling that I'm not getting my fair share? If you have road projects, and I would vote, I got what he said. He's stating, what I understand is, everything that's on this list that's marked for Darien will get done with a twenty percent split. Do y'all disagree with that?
That's the county's list.
No, we have y'all's list too, from the city manager.
If I may speak, just for a moment.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
I don't know whether I know all of what the problem is, but part of it's that we're hung up on five percent. It seems like everyone is happy with the fact that we have moved away from thirty percent. When we started off as a city, we were at the thirty percent. We talked, we had meetings. The last meeting we had, David was there. Mr. Skeen made it plain, because, you know, all of this has been discussed. He was at thirty, not willing to move. David was at twenty, not willing to move. Neither county commissioners nor city had a meeting about it. We're still hoping to have a beneficial meeting about this. He said, what's the difference? I used a scenario with someone earlier. The city and the county's been working together a lot. The magic of moving that little bubble up there in the city building. We've got to continue doing that. The city and the county works together. I use the scenario of the blood crossing the parkers, because I know a lot about that. State, federal law require that we have city water and sewer. Mr. Watson, we can get you three million dollars. If you don't get that, it's dead, it's done. We work with the county, we work with the city, we have city, water, and sewer. County and city working together. Right now, we have this infrastructure of the city water and sewer. Ninety-five for exit forty-nine would be a ghost town. We've got to keep those roads going there. More roads traveled, the sooner you're going to need to repair. I guarantee you, if you build a new road and no one travels on it, it'll be there past all of our lifetime. So, that's the scenario there too. What are we arguing about? We've got to do all of the roads in the county. We're arguing about five percent, because I won't move five percent. Another room was, I was not flexible. Kate was in the room. I'm flexible. We're waiting for the meeting to come back, that we can negotiate that. And I think it's just the five percent. We're going to stick with the twenty, and we're not going to move. All the money goes to the roads. Savannah, Georgia, I guarantee, County County will not argue with Savannah, Georgia, because they bring in a zillion bucks for the county. They wouldn't have that argument. Other cities and counties do have the twenty-five, seventy-five split. We're arguing over five percent. You can't do anything with the money but put it on the county roads and ditches, county and city. And as he said, every inch of the city is in the county. We've got to work together, so we are arguing. Or we're going to lose. If the county decides, well, we're not going to move off our five percent, not an inch, we're going to stick with the twenty come hell or high water, and the city says, well, we're going to stick with the thirty, guess what happened? Biggest I've heard is one point two seven, one point two million dollars. Gone.
Counselor, so, go ahead.
That's kind of silly, isn't it? I don't want to get too, but that's...
So, Councilman, justify the twenty-five percent now.
Justify the twenty-five percent.
Twenty percent pays for everything on your list and leaves you with three hundred thousand in the bank.
Yes.
So, when you say we won't move five percent...
That's what you are saying.
From both sides, it varies.
Absolutely.
Justify that five percent. What if I took a position and tried to convince this board to take a position that we have eighty-nine percent of the roads? With eighty-nine percent of the tax? You and Councilman Skeen have both stated in here tonight that one hundred percent of the roads in the city are in the county. Well, then, sign up, and we'll take a hundred percent, and we'll take your roads.
Is that statement true, since you're going to use it?
I have to get this board to vote for it.
Okay. Okay. You have to vote on whether every road in the city is in the county?
No, I said on the...
Now, as you're...
The hundred percent is flat.
You said we said it. Is that correct or not? Hundred percent of the roads...
I don't understand your question. Reiterate your question.
You made the statement.
What was the question?
You said that we said every road in the city is in the county. And the only thing I ask you, isn't that a true statement?
Absolutely.
Okay, then. Where is that? And then we'll break it, because we still did lock it.
Does that, does me saying I represent you that a hundred percent of the roads are in the county, what does that get me on that five percent that you're saying we're hung up on?
On the five percent. Why don't the city and the county get all of this money and do as what we're doing in this room right now? We're sharing resource. You're in the city building, having a meeting with the city electricity, water, and stuff. We've got to work together. All that money's going to come in, and guess what it's going? It's going to pay every road that was Kate Pontell have, and some extra roads. Why would we want to lose one point two million dollars when we go alone? That would be a problem with the county.
That's not a question to you. That's not a question to your board. If you're here representing the entire city council, when we're offering you twenty percent of a tax, that you have eleven percent of the roads. Justify that five percent. Change my mind.
Because all of it's going to help the county. All of it. That's all I'm saying. Every penny of that twenty dollars.
I'm not there, maybe somebody's...
Every twenty-five percent will help the county.
I don't want to talk about that.
Thank you.
I'm just clarifying something. So, we said it's seventy-five percent, or seventy-five cents on the dollar, which would be seventy-five percent.
It'd be seventy-five percent of a penny.
Right. Okay. So, we, you already said we would not be able to complete the miscellaneous if we had to go that route.
Right. If we went that route, it would cut about three hundred and seventy-five thousand out of our miscellaneous budget.
Okay. So, I'm just sitting here, and I represent every district, so I feel like I want to ask these questions on behalf of the city too. And eighty, twenty is where I am, and I'm not really sure, I'm still confused. I feel like it's almost like you're asking for an olive branch to see that we would, I don't, it doesn't feel like it makes sense to me if the reason you want five more, five percent more is just for us to say that we would be willing to give it, if you're not going to be short on what you need. And I'm looking at the list, you know, they're used more in the face of McIntosh County. I feel like what you said, all the roads are included there, but how would that be different with, like he said, holding all the money at the county and fixing every road? It seems like it's more of an issue of just being, you want us to be willing to give a little bit more to show that we're willing to work together, but it's not necessarily the money that you need.
There's no justification.
Right. And I, listen, I don't want, I don't want an issue like this to create, I feel like we have been working really well together, but I kind of feel like it's a little bit of a forced hand. Like, we have the money we need, we're going to have a little extra, but in order for you to look like you're wanting to work with, I felt like it was like that, like you were saying, but if you really want to work with us and make it look like we're working for everybody, give us five more percent. And I know that I personally, I'm going to sit here and say this, that I'm fully in agreement with the add-ons, and if it came down to it, where you all couldn't get some things done, I know Kate would fight for it, I would too, you know, to try to fight, if it happened to be that you didn't have enough with the twenty percent. And I understand you started at thirty, but, you know, that's how negotiations go, as you mentioned with the car dealership, you shoot high and hope that you get more than what you really wanted. Or, you know, you try to get that price by shooting high. So, thirty percent would probably, you know, just like, let's throw this out there. I know I'm talking a lot. I don't want to work with you, but I also, I can't get my head around, if you're going to have money left over, and we might lose out on our miscellaneous projects, and, you know...
And understand, the miscellaneous projects are big to the voters. It's a sidewalk down Blunt's Crossing. I mean, it's a bike path down Blunt's Crossing. You know, it's, there's numerous things on the miscellaneous list that gets done in the next five years. And again, when we talk about an olive branch, twenties percent of the tax, when you have eleven percent of the roads, we'll say fifteen percent tomorrow, fourteen percent of the roads, the concessions on the tipping fee, the concessions on Market Street, and concessions on that ditch, the olive branch is there. And I'm really, I'm really confused as to why this is where we are. I mean, I'm blown away with this. This is so good.
It sounds like greed.
This is so good.
I was so frustrated by this relationship to be strained by.
Absolutely.
Well, since you used the word greed, I'm a little offended by that, and that's a little rough. The city is not greedy. None of that money comes into our pocket.
That's whenever we open this up, this is, this is what happens, and this is why we had, that was an official meeting of the committee. That's why you formed the committee, is to hash these things out. But I also didn't want to come in here and just kind of tell the county side with city representation here and not hear from the city. I know y'all know it too. You get in that room and have a vote where you're going to be. But again, whether we want to have another meeting of the committee, or whether we want to call a meeting and get all ten of the city councilmen and county commissioners in a room, or whether we want to try to roll forward, somebody changed my mind.
You said three hundred thousand? You say the surplus money? I think when we calculate that, and I believe we're going to go forward one way or another. I don't think the county want to lose one point two million, but when you say that three hundred thousand, we all agree. I know Adam said, he's been here a long time, and quite as long as me, I'm a little old. But the ditches, we didn't, there is no surplus money. That's, I won't use rough words, there is no surplus money with the ditches that we need to get fixed. And there's not, we don't have enough money to repair the ditch problem. Let's face that. That's a, that's a long program.
Basically, I mean, we're basing our discussion on what the city presented to the county. Our list of roads, y'all's list of roads, our list does include some miscellaneous projects that are scattered all over the county.
No ditches.
Ditches are on there.
And our miscellaneous, right now, we're working with some engineers.
But not on the city list. I don't see ditches on the city list.
So, when we say surplus, I don't want the media to put out, oh, they got three hundred thousand dollar surpluses, and the constituents will say, well, what about the ditches? That's been bad for thirty years.
There's not any ditches on this list. We refer in the values of the...
This is the reference.
Oh, okay. I don't know, but if it's in trying to get repairs...
The next resident, the next resident, she calls for a minute.
Mr. Attorney, did you want to say something?
Mr. Chairman, just an observation. I certainly hope that this doesn't degrade to a point where we think the people in the city of Darien per capita are entitled to more than the people outside the city limits are. I think that's why the SLOSS tax appropriation defaults to population. And I think that with all due respect of the legislature, I think they did us a disservice by not drawing the same parallels on T-SLOSS. It seems to me that no matter where you live in McIntosh County, you're equal to everybody else in McIntosh County. But if we spend an inordinate amount, much more per person in the city, I think we're making a statement that, that the people of the city of Darien deserve more, or are worth more than the people outside the city limits. And that's disturbing to me, and I don't want that to be the message. I don't think anybody intends that to be the message, but I hope that that's not the message that's sent here tonight by this conversation.
And I don't think that in no way entails, there's, you know, this city, this county, we have great people here, and nobody is better than anybody. Nobody. But the city and the county needs to work together. And I did put it, just like I stated, I put it, I said, Kate, whatever you come back to me on, I will take back to the council members. Our meeting is next week, and as soon as y'all are done with this meeting, and tomorrow's meeting, y'all will bring to us, and we'll bring it to the council. I am one person, but I promise you, Mr. Popple, that myself, this is, you know, the work agreed, and I do respect Mr. Watson a lot, but, you know, the city has made great strides in the last few years, and we have worked together with this county. And just like I told David, you know, he's county, he is our chairperson, and I respect what he says, but the city is not greed. We do not think our citizens are better than anybody else, but it would be beneath me if I didn't fight for every one of my constituents that elected me. If I just say, and I agree that we have to work together, we do, and I hope and pray that it's not misconstrued, that we have brought something, or myself has brought something other than pure respect for all of y'all out there.
I truly believe to the commission board, to the councilmen that are here, the city attorney, if we get to an agreement, when we get to an agreement, I don't say when we get to an agreement, and these lists made public, it's a win-win for every citizen in this county. It completely takes care of our road issues, city and county. So, tomorrow, there is an action item to consider that resolution, which is number nine, two thousand nineteen dash six, calling for an election to impose a county transportation special purpose local option sales tax. It's an action item. The manager, do you have anything after that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will take action on that tomorrow. The referendum is in our books. It is written as eighty, twenty. If there's a difference, if the commission has, wants to do something different, we can discuss it now, or we can discuss it tomorrow, but we will be prepared, please be prepared to take a vote on two thousand nineteen dash six.
Question? Is it an either or situation, seventy-five or eight?
The referendum that we have prepared is eighty, twenty.
Understood. The question is, could we also vote? Could the committees have also decided upon a number other than seventy-five or eight? Could it have been seventy-six? Could it have been sixty-two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that number nine? Okay. The last item on our agenda is consider appeal of Tony Thawman's novel for certificate of appropriateness made by the McIntosh County Preservation Commission at the June thirteenth meeting two thousand nineteen. Is the manager or the attorney going to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Thaw this morning. He and I agreed on some points, and we disagreed on some points. And I would ask that you to hear me out before we start taking it apart, but Mr. Thaw has proposed to build a house in Hawkham, Arizona, Vision on Sapporo Island. I've got his plans right here. It's a big house. If you read it verbatim and just take it for what it says, it looks a lot like all the other houses over there, with a few exceptions. One of the exceptions is this huge garage, big three-bay garage. It's not a garage, it's a carport, and it has a living area up above it that he says he would not close in or anything, it would just be like attic space, and it's got dormers for windows on it.
Right. So, then, when you say living area, is it living area, or what is it?
Well, he says that he wants his wife to be able to do her artwork up there. That was his idea, and do use it for stories. But now it has normal windows, it has things that make it look like a living area, you know, has climatized living area, he says it's not. Having said that, there's nothing out of there that looks like this, that garage. So, you know, he and I agree to disagree, I think, on the garage issue, and the Historic Preservation Commission went much further than that. They pointed out rightfully so, that if you read the guidelines to the, that the University of Georgia wrote many, many years ago, that our zoning... that our zoning ordinance refers to, that it's supposed to be proportionate, and, and it's supposed to aesthetically blend with the older structures that are there. Well, the fact is, is that none of that construction in this general area blends with anything that was the older construction. I mean, there are houses that are built up twenty, fifteen feet, not twenty feet, but probably fifteen feet in the air. I mean, none of these houses are, and there are a bunch of them, none of these houses look anything like what the, what the original intent of that ordinance was. In addition, we've taken house trailers over there, replaced house trailers with other house trailers through the years. I think ultimately what needs to happen is that we need to reconsider the historic zone, redefine the historic zone, and, and allow that properties over there that are historically significant to, to remain in the historic zone, this area out here where Mr. Thaw's at, where Mr. Higgin's house is, and where Mr. Coleman's house is. That area, as far as I can tell, and I've done some very, very slight investigation, I think what needs to happen to Hogham to fix this issue, those areas need to come out of this historic zone. There's a historic zone there, behavior cemetery, the churches, the strip that runs down the middle, the Autobahn. Those areas are extremely significant historically. There are parts of Hogham that are not. Hogham was a subdivision that was created basically at the turn of the century to relocate folks. And, and it wasn't in one of the best locations, it was a low area for the most part. But, but things have changed, folks now desire that property for whatever reason. I can't get my head around wanting to live there because it seems like it's, it's so awkward, you have to get on a boat and get to wherever you live. There's a lot of people that are seeking that property, and property's become very, very desirable for whatever reason now. And I guess when you stand on Dennis Coleman's porch, or on Tony's back there, you back there, you can see, it looks out over the marsh. It is, it's pretty misty, yeah, it's something nice to, to aspire to. But I don't think that, that we've, we've got two competing interests going here. We've got one that says that we ought to be enforcing this zoning verbatim the way it's been done in the past. And the problem is, is that nobody has been enforcing it for the last twenty years in accordance with those guidelines. They've been building big fancy houses. And they've been getting around it by saying, oh, only fourteen hundred square feet seated by my head, three hundred, or my head, three thousand square foot porches. So I think what will happen tomorrow, with your consent of course, is that Mr. Thaw will address, and so will I, and we'll talk about this, this recommendation from the Historic Preservation folks. And y'all will be able to decide, he's literally appealing the decision of Historic Preservation Commission to y'all. I think he thinks he ought to be able to build it, just like he's presented it. I think I have some issues with some of it, especially that carport garage structure. But he thinks he ought to be able to build it exactly, and you have a four-year Historic Preservation Commission's recommendations.
And there was no interest on this part of being here tonight to discuss it tonight?
No, I told him to be here tomorrow, I told him, that was me.
So is he going to talk when his item comes up, or we're going to have him talk in a visitor presentation?
Depends on, depends on how he says it, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. With what you just said, so you said part of it you don't think needs to be considered that historic preservation, whatever.
I, I think the problem is, is that this property lies in an area of Hogham which is filled up, for whatever reason.
Well, the other question I had might be, you know, you could answer this at the same time. I mean, I kind of feel like, and I'm not, I don't want to change, I mean, I, you know, obviously, if you live over there for life, you don't want to see all these big houses pop up. But then you said, but we let other people do it and really haven't followed the guidelines.
But I don't know, I don't know, I don't know that we can say, the guidelines are guidelines. There are suggestions for ways to do it, and then there are zoning regulations that we got.
Are there any other houses that have been built in the historic district that don't meet what the Historic Preservation Commission thinks? I mean, is there, are there other, I'm saying, is there a good argument on his side that, hey?
There has never.
I'm standing on my front porch.
There has never been a house since the Historic Preservation, zoning ordinance was written, there has never been a house to nine dollars that did not have a certificate of approval from the Historic Preservation folks. So they said that it complied. They said that Miss Coleman's house complied, they said Mr. Higgin's house complied, they said all these other houses complied.
Are they similar, I mean, are they, or is it just?
They look exactly like, well, I say exactly like, Mr. Thaw's house has some unique.
So it's the garage?
Yeah, it's definitely the garage, but now Mr. Thaw's house isn't built up high, his is like four steps up. You see what I'm saying?
I was just trying to, you know, like I, I don't really understand, you know, we want to change the historic, you know, there's parts that shouldn't be in it, but then there's places that are in it, and they're very similar, so.
Yeah, yeah, this, this house, this house looks very much like the houses that are new to the mountain. It was a subdivision, subdivision of the Seager Banks property, Mr. Banks' house there himself looked much kind of, much like this house.
Ms. Gaddis, are you the chair of that board?
I am.
I don't know.
Then our, our ex-chair is here, Dr. Mullins, and I have two members.
I understand, I recognize everybody in the crowd. I think either, do you want to speak tonight, do you want to speak tomorrow? When he comes, I wish y'all were just talking at the same time, not the same time, the same venue, but.
Well, I'm happy to talk, I'm happy to, although you're happy to talk for a minute, go over the, the things that we found as the board.
Absolutely.
Would you like me to do that?
Yes.
So, so Ms. Gaddis, we have a completely new board as of January. Eunice Moore and Clay Hutchinson are the only two that are the existing board members since January.
Dolores Walker.
Sorry?
Dolores.
Oh, and Dolores, I apologize, Dolores Walker, she's our secretary. So we have three members that have been on the board, and then we have four new members. And so in January of two thousand nineteen, I took over as chair, and the members of the board, we reviewed our guidelines, we reviewed our ordinances. The ordinances defer to your guidelines, the last part of the ordinances. These are the ordinances, but they are to follow the guidelines, the guidelines are extremely integrated, they're from two thousand and five. They're recommendations guidelines, they're not, the verbiage in it is not very solid, it's very hard to defend it by the way that it's written, because it is recommendations. So there's a lot of loopholes in it, and I can see where the last ten years, a lot of things have happened because there's a lot of loopholes in it. However, I do have a history on Sapporo Island, I was there for fifteen years. When this guidelines were written, I was actually the driver that drove these people around and made these guidelines, so I have, you know, I have a history with it. The difference between what Mr. Thaw is doing and what I've seen in the past COAs is that Mr. Thaw has over four thousand square feet of living space on his blueprints. You're supposed to have anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred heated and cooled. He has twelve hundred heated and cooled conditioned area, which is allowable. However, for the whole building, it's over four thousand square feet. The way the guidelines are written, it states that you are to have proportional porches to your living space. His outside living space, his porch area is twice the size of the conditioned area. That's not proportional. And so that's just one example, all of this has been written down, we gave it to him on the thirteenth. No one was there except for our board, we had no representation from you guys at that meeting. And it clearly states in the guidelines that you are not to have a second floor. You can have one and a half stories, which means a loft or an unheated area. On his blueprint, it says second floor, on the blueprint, second floor. Buddy Sullivan, who is on our commission, asked Mr. Thaw when he came for his application, he said, did your architect have a copy of these guidelines? And he said, yes, he had a copy of the guidelines. There's no way he could have had a copy of the guidelines and come up with the blueprints that are there. I have no personal interest in this, I believe in property rights and equal rights, but this is grossly unproportional to what's already up there.
To any other house over there?
I don't see Mr. Coleman's. But all the other ones, the other blueprints I've looked at don't state such gross, you know, second floor, I mean, it says second floor on the plan, how can we say, yes, you can have these plans when it's clearly says second floor on the plans? I mean, in, in the living space, yes, you have twelve hundred feet of heated and cooled.
If you're talking about this second floor of the garage, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Says second floor. And then four thousand square feet are, are more in total numbers for square feet. Well, if you've only got twelve hundred square feet of living space, your porch is supposed to be of equal proportion or smaller. I'm thinking that should be six to seven hundred square feet, well, it's over three thousand. It has an outdoor kitchen, it has an outdoor living space. The walls of the porch are supposed to have either open air or screened. He has full wall, half walls, with cabinets, a sink, an outdoor cooking area with ventilation under hoods. I mean, it's just, it's just out of, it's just, you know, it's not even close to being inside of the.
Out of value.
Man?
The private.
An apartment. So, I mean, we tried to be fair, but we weren't doing our job as we said, yes. So, you know, and, and he brought up that at the meeting, he said, well, everybody else has it. And I said, well, you know, Mr. Thaw, I can't speak for what happened this morning. This is the first application that this board has seen, and this is what we've made our decision on. And he said, well, if I change this, this, and this, can I have it? I said, sir, that's not what we're here for tonight, what we're here for tonight is these plans, whether they pass our board, these plans do not pass our board. If you would like to go back and bring some more plans, I'm not saying that we can't build over there or do what you want, but you got to follow the rules. And so that's, that's where we are. And so then he asked me, you know, what would be next? And so our ordinance states that if, once we reject it, then it goes to you guys, so it's, it's your decision. So I can say that, you know, we did our job, and now it's your job.
Probably, probably a court may now put us away on the count, and that is.
Thank you for that, that's a lot more information. That explains that we're the new board in January.
So we'll hear from Mr. Thaw tomorrow, Ms. Gaddis, if you want to come back, you can.
I think that would be very helpful, because I know there are going to be questions that are going to get slung back and forth, so.
Well, I'm just a little bit curious, I thought that the way that it worked, that this was when we did all the questions and answers, and you guys just fed them tomorrow.
No, I told Mr. Thaw, Mr. Thaw asked me when he should come, and tonight's not an action, not, not, this is simply an information night. You can, and you can, you can interpret it that way, like you suggested, but I, I think the proper way to do it is that we need to be here before we begin any further discussion of it.
So for the agenda for tomorrow, he will be giving a presentation, is that correct?
I know he does, I know he does.
So he has someone to speak, fall down, with his president?
I, he had a chance, the way he talked to me, the way he told me was that he would be here himself, so.
So I was just curious, is there any agenda for tomorrow, or is it a visitor presentation, we have none? So there's no.
He's on visitor, though.
His, that's an action item, see, that's not, that's not just kind of chit chat, that's a, that's a.
So what happens is tonight, that's considered.
But, I mean, just, I mean, we allow, we allow, we allow the historic board to participate tonight, and y'all weren't on the agenda, but somebody told you you were, somebody invited you here.
No, no, we didn't.
So all four of y'all just showed up just to show?
Yeah, because when he was.
Come on, guys, come on, okay, okay.
That's very coincidental, that's very coincidental.
No, no, sir, it's not coincidental, we knew, we knew that when he left, when he left our meeting on the thirteenth, he stated, I'm going to the commission.
In no way am I trying to debate your board.
Yeah.
Let's hear from him tomorrow, and it may turn into a full-fledged debate, but we'll find out tomorrow.
Look, you asked him to speak just now.
Absolutely, I invited you to speak, I invite any board member to speak that comes here out of strict respect. We're tickled of board members of Rita's office.
Right, so I was only here because.
No, you weren't here.
I wanted to hear if he was going to be on the agenda.
And in no way was I questioning you speaking tonight when we asked you to, okay?
Um, yeah, because I'm missing from it now, I mean.
I, I looked on to see when the meeting was on the, on the internet, and it said they had, which is tomorrow, but it said they had a workshop on Monday. So I said, I think I'll go back, because I figured, don't think we'd be here, and I'd like to see what he, where his stance was, for him.
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, these guys have worked extraordinarily hard on this. They had one, they've already had a special call moving this aside, this, these issues that they had, so. They, they have, they have a vested interest in, in their positions, and I, I want y'all to know, I appreciate what y'all are doing. We are, we are dealing with an issue on Sapporo Island that needed to be dealt with for a long time. And, and I know that we'll, we'll leave tomorrow with a better understanding of what we've been doing.
If we had planned this, we would go out after now, and get together and talk about it, but we're not going to do that, because y'all are going to have.
All right. All right, so, we're going to move on from that, I think it's appropriate now for us to ask someone to make a motion to go into executive session and discuss what's in there.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
All right, you got a motion by Commissioner McClellan, is there a second?
I'm saying.
Any further discussion, all is in effect.
Aye.
opposed, motion goes to end. If you're trained, Miss Kathleen, there will be an action.